Good evening. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting tonight, please complete a request-to-speak form available at the entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speaker will be called upon at the appropriate time. I will now call to order and convene the City Council, and the City Council is successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency for July 11, 2017, City of Grand Terrace. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Tara Vincross of Azure Hills Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our City Manager Harold Duffy. Would you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you bow your heads with me in prayer? Our God, in Psalm 23, you remind us that you are our shepherd, and that with you we lack nothing. So today, we turn to you, the one who provides everything that we need. We're asking that you would be with us, be with our city, that you would provide us the wisdom, and the strength, and the collaboration that we need to carry forward the vision you've called us to. I pray for each of the individuals here that are leaders in our community, that you would bless them, that you would bless their families. And God, please lead us forward as we continue to live up this time with the need of such great love and a need for change. Please help us, oh God, we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Vincross. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Reynars. Councilmember Hesse.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Councilmember Reynars is absent. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight. And so we'll move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. However, any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any items to be removed at this time? Seeing none, we also have item seven, and we need to read by title on that item. So if, we'll do so if we have a motion for approval.
Madam Mayor?
I just, before we begin with the consent calendar with respect to the ordinance, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just take a moment to give you a brief update on the minutes and the preparation that's been ongoing since December. A majority of the minutes, that's why you're seeing quite a few on this agenda, and you'll see probably several more in the upcoming meetings. The ones that I've been handling, we're getting those all caught up, and they are up to date. Some of the ones from prior meetings are still on back order and have been outsourced, but I wanted to just assure you that all of your minutes will be up to date within the month of August. We will be all caught up.
All right. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding zoning code amendment seventeen hyphen zero two exempt from CEQA and adopting an ordinance to repeal and replace in its entirety section eighteen point seven three point zero six zero of chapter eighteen point seven three, general regulations and exceptions of title eighteen zoning relating to the dedication, construction, and maintenance of public improvements.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Wilson, Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on our agenda tonight. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. We may also ask for a brief response from staff or to have the matter agendized for a later meeting. Is there, are there any requests to speak at this time?
No.
All right. Is there anybody wishing to speak at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications, and we will start with Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I just got some comments. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department and our first responders for being out there in force on Fourth of July. Really appreciate it. We had some illegal activity with the fireworks, and I also went walking around. It is kind of hard to find them because they're lighting them in their backyards, and they're shooting at it like at an angle and stuff, but I appreciate all the hard work. On that note, you know, I came across some pets running around. You know, please, residents, get your dogs licensed. If you're having issues or difficulty with them, you know, maybe go with the city. You know, I even donate a couple licenses so you can make sure your pets are taken care of. We need to take care of our pets. And then on the, one last thing, on the roads being repaired, I'm asking the residents, when you see a no parking sign for that day, that means no parking. Don't leave your vehicle there, and then they have to go around. And it just makes it hard on staff, and then we've got to rearrange schedules and stuff, so please follow the rules and regulations on that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything tonight.
All right. Mayor Protem Robles.
I guess I don't have any meetings until tomorrow for On the Trans, but I just wanted to thank staff, all the staff on the paving program. There was a mistake as far as my personal street, but, you know, mistakes happen, and we're still happy. And we're very pleased that you brought all the residents today a letter explaining what was going on. That was very nice. Thank you. And I didn't know if I was invited, or if I was just being told that the staff was going to go to Fiery Grill, but I showed up and enjoyed it. And then I went the next day and took my husband. I think that's just really some fabulous, healthy food. It's one of my favorites, and I welcome Fiery Grill to our community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. I have a SBCTA board meeting tomorrow. It's a week later this month because of the holiday. And the one thing I wanted to bring up is that we will be voting on what they call the Interstate Ten Corridor Project, which is the project that will bring about toll lanes on the I-10 in multiple phases. What tomorrow we'll look at is the final environmental impact report, and that was approved recently by Caltrans, who is the lead agency on this. It has been out for public comment, and it's been brought up in this forum as well. I just wanted to bring it up one last time since I have not heard anything opposing from residents or from my colleagues, although there are people that come to the SBCTA meetings that claim that nobody wants these carpool lanes. So this would be the last, the last opportunity for somebody to appeal to me as to why we should not move forward, or we should vote to not move forward with the express lanes that will be built. The first phase of it will start at the west end of the city, or, excuse me, west end of the county. It will be ten miles of freeway on the I-10 from the I-15 to the county line, so that's between Montclair and Clermont. So we won't see a lot of particular construction here, but it will affect us as they are building these express lanes. So for any more information, SBCTA has a nice little document on their website, and it has a diagram of what this will look like when it's finished, but that is set to be voted on tomorrow. So I thought I would bring that up. And I will talk about one thing having to do with street repairs, and I'm very happy that we've gotten through the first phase. I know that there was a lot of, a lot of anxiety on the part of the residents prior to it happening, and then a number of them after, just exclaiming how great the streets looked. So this is something that's just been coming for a long time. We're not used to road repairs. We're not used to the inconvenience, but it's certainly worth it. And what I hope that we can do is let the residents know what are the, what are the next set of streets that are expected to be repaired with the budget that we just approved last meeting, so that they can anticipate that, you know, this isn't it. We didn't just choose these ones, and we're not going to do anymore. So they have something to look forward to. I'd really appreciate that. And that will be all that I have tonight. So we will move on to public hearings, of which we have two. To speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request-to-speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else has raised during this public hearing portion of the meeting, or, as described in the notice. If there's written correspondence delivered to the city, or prior to the public hearing, that might be an option for challenging in court as well. We will start with our first public hearing, item number eight in your agendas, hearing of appeals of delinquent refuse, sewer, and rental inspection fees, action to collect said delinquent fees on the tax roll, and for placement of assessments for said delinquent fees on properties located in the city. Do we have any written correspondence, Madam City Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Maybe we have a staff report, then?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Protem, and distinguished council members. This is, the item before you now is for a public hearing for the placement of assessment or liens for delinquent refuse, sewer, and rental inspection.
I'm going to interrupt you right now. For whatever reason, my agenda in front of me says item number eight is this hearing of appeals, but I know in our packet it is packet number nine, so my apologies to my colleagues.
Okay.
But since you're there, we'll go ahead and have you continue.
We can continue.
Sorry for the confusion.
Yes, we can continue this. Okay. Items for assessing or putting liens on property for delinquent accounts for trash, sewer, and rental fees. The staff report supports the twenty-third vision goal number one, to ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for services. Chapter five point four-two and thirteen point zero-eight of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code allow the collection of unpaid fees for trash and sewer respectively. Chapter five point eight oh of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code establishes a non-owner occupied rental property program to identify substandard non-owner occupied rental property to ensure the rehabilitation of properties that do not meet the minimum standards. Staff has issued notices on all three of these types of accounts on June seventh with the assistance of Burt Tech Waste and the City of Colton for the sewer. The notices were sent to the property owners via certified mail. Delinquent users were given up until noon today to pay off their accounts. The list in the staff report was previous to the date of today. In your packets today, you should have the latest one, which was updated at noon today, and should list the accounts that are still delinquent. On the revised list, it should show that sixty-three properties have been removed for residential trash and sewer. One property has been removed for commercial sewer, and eighteen properties were removed from rental property inspection program. So as of today, July eleventh, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight parcels are still listed as delinquent. And even if the council approves the list today, property owners will still have up until August twenty-fifth to bring their accounts current. To date, no formal written protests have been received. At this time, staff is recommending council conduct the public hearing to hear appeals of the delinquent fees and adopt the resolution to apply the fees to the tax rolls for the county assessor. Staff is here to answer any questions that the council may have, as well as representatives from Burt Tech and the City of Colton.
Thank you for your report. Does council have questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
So on these delinquent fees, and you said by August, so what does that mean? We're going to, there's going to be a lien on their property, or we have any other way to collect this for?
After August, that's correct, it would go to the county assessor, and he would place it on the tax rolls for the property taxes.
Because, you know, I was going through the list, and some of these look like, you know, on the same street, you know, the residents say that they're not getting their mail when we had the mail test, or, you know, there's electronics. I mean, there's all kinds of excuses that probably could come up, but that's a lot of money on the delinquents, you know, over eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, it is. I, we agree. Again, we've sent the certified notice, and if the residents hear and see the list from the council meeting, they can come in and pay anytime up until August twenty-fifth, but the list will be updated at that time, and hopefully, there will be more that come in and pay.
So besides the council, I mean, did you send out mailers to these addresses and say they're delinquent on that, besides the companies doing it, the city has to be responsible for it?
Certified mail, mailers. Let's see. Let me check. I think Burt Tech was involved in sending out notices with the sewer bills, if I'm not mistaken.
Would you come forward and let us know who you are, please?
There you go. So mailers were sent out on June sixth. Typically, we notify delinquent accounts of the delinquency, their amount owing, and the timeframe to pay. As mentioned in the staff report, residents still have up until the twenty-third to make their accounts current. Typically, since it's, since service is mandatory, kind of goes mandatory service, mandatory pay, so the ability to collect for services provided requires a process, and this process is one which provides for folks to pay for services provided, and thus, you know, franchise fees for the City of Grand Terrace as well.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we're doing everything in our compliance to get this taken care of.
Certainly.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Wilson.
Just one question, and that is for our Public Works person. What is our cost recovery situation in relation to this? I'm assuming that, you know, this is costing extra staff time to be able to square this way. I don't see any reason why we can't introduce an ordinance that, especially on the folks that are chronic late payers, that past a certain date, there's a, an extra tab that they have to pay, maybe half of their bill.
According to the delinquent list, there is an amount for each item, and the administration fee is what would be extra collected.
Very good. So then, in order to be able to clear, then they have to pay that administrative fee on top of the base fee.
That would go along with the total amount.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll open it up at this time for public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
Move approval to adopt a resolution, the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace, adopting a reported delinquent refuse and sewer user fees, directing that such delinquent fees be collected on the tax roll and be imposed by an assessment upon property within the City of Grand Terrace, and adopt a resolution, the City Council, the City of Grand Terrace. County of San Bernardino, State of California, adopting a reported delinquent non-owner occupied rental property program fees and fines, and directing that such delinquent fees and fines be collected on the tax roll and be imposed as a lien upon property within the City of Grand Terrace.
Madam Mayor, may I suggest we also do the resolution for the refuse and sewer user fees?
Okay. Where's that?
On the agenda, it's item two. Councilmember Wilson read item number three, which has to do with the rental, and so number two is with the refuse and sewer user fees.
You did two and three?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson said he has read.
I read both.
Both.
That's acceptable to me.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Wilson and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
And thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for keeping us straight.
Apparently, it wasn't necessary.
All right. Better safe than sorry. So we will go to my item nine and everyone else's item eight, which is the annual levy of assessment for twenty-seventeen eighteen Landscape and Lighting Assessment District eighty-nine dash one. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Protem, and council members. Alan French, Public Works. For this item, our presenter will be Adrian Freeman, Management Analyst with Public Works Department.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As stated, Adrian Freeman for the record, Management Analyst. The staff report supports the twenty-thirty vision goal number one, to ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery In nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-nine, the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was formed for the purpose of maintaining the landscaping and lighting for track one-three-three-six-four, which is the bottom section there. It's working. All right. Subsequently, the top section that's highlighted, which is track one-four-two-six-four, and, next slide, please, track one-four-four-seven-one were annexed. And we would like to point out that we did find one error on the map from the previous, or actually from your packet. So you'll see the street leading into the development. In your packet, it says Emerald, and it should be Franklin. So that has been corrected in your handouts that you have now. Next slide, please. This is the Greenbrier Development, and this particular development, excuse me, was annexed last year, as well as the Palomino Court Development, which you'll find on the next slide. This is right off of Pico Street. Staff has reviewed the expenditures for fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. The cost of operation and maintenance should remain the same for the coming fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, with the addition of our latest annexations for the Greenbrier Development, as well as the development at Palomino Court. We would like to make clear that there is no change or increase proposed to the assessments for the district. Thank you. At this time, staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing to hear appeals of the annual levy of the Assessment District. And then, upon closing the public hearing, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution providing for the annual assessment levy for the Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District. If there are any questions, staff, or our representatives from Milldown are also here tonight, more than willing to answer any questions that you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Okay, no questions. Very good. So we'll open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on this item? All right, seeing no takers, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Want to conduct a public hearing and to adopt resolution number two-zero-one-seven, resolution of the City of Grand Terrace confirming the diagram and assessment, providing for the annual assessment levy for the Landscaping and Street Lightning District.
Second.
Motion passes with Councilmember Wilson voting yes, Councilmember Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have no unfinished business tonight. We have no new business tonight, which brings us to City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, you're Harold Duffy, City Manager. I just have a couple slides to go over the council. Just some activity from the Fourth of July weekend. Just going to give you some stats, and if you have any questions, Battalion Chief Wooters is here, and also Lieutenant Wolf, they can add on anything if you have any questions. So this is the information that occurred from June thirtieth through July fifth. There were four citations issued, and there were about thirty overall calls for service. As you can see, the activity per day, you see what actually happened per day. I think that the additional increase in this period is when the fire department's crew came on board and assisted with the Sheriff's Department in this activity. So that's kind of...
Or no calls on July second. Wow.
Or July fifth.
Wow.
Related to...
There was one call on July.
Related to the fireworks, at least that's what the information is stating. My next item deals with the slurry seal project. Basically, the slurry seal application ended yesterday, and so one of the things that residents need to know is that that's not the end of the project. The application, the initial application ended. Now, there's a period, sort of a, go to the contractor's completion list. So there's a punch list that our inspector went through and said, these items are not acceptable. The contractor gets that list, and then he'll come back next week and complete that list. And then after that, we would then start to see striping occur throughout, throughout the, sort of putting the final touches on the streets that were slurry sealed. So just to put it in context, there were about eighty streets that were slurried. If you say there's an average of about twenty streets, twenty homes per street, you're looking at about six hundred homes, and maybe it's two point seven per household, you're looking at almost five thousand people that were impacted directly in front of their homes. And so one of the things that we did, based on the initial comments that we were getting, we ended up doing a daily update on the progress of each street. We started, first report was at ten AM, and then two PM, and five PM, letting people know that what streets were actually being done, and where they were in the process. And so we did see some things calm down... And so we, we did see some things calm down, but, um, I think for the most part, um, we were able to manage it. We learned a few things, so next phase will be a little sharper. With that, I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We have no closed session tonight. So the final item is for us to adjourn. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, at twenty seventeen. At six PM, agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than fourteen calendar days preceding the meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are adjourned.